We're at nine o'clock with the sheriff. Sheriff Toth to discuss some things. That dispatcher wage that maybe was misunderstood or not clear on one or both parts. And the jail update needs for the jail, a printer lease discussion, an update on the 911 system, how that's going, a shift differential remediation discussion, year review of how the department is and where it still needs to go.
That's right.
All right, Sheriff Toth.
Well, I guess we're, after last week, I guess it was, I saw that Tiffany, our, one of our lead dispatchers, who we talked about earlier on the July 16th, would get the dollar and the 65 cents because she was hired in May. And of course, we agreed with it. And then her, sorry, her and Anna Mae and Kim, the three supervisors out there. And then, but then I see that only Anna Mae and Kim got the dollar 65 and Tiffany only got the dollar and didn't get the 65 added on. So my request is that the 65 gets added on as discussed on the
I thought we were, she was just getting the dollar up.
Well, you guys gave, supposedly gave every, the discussion back in July was you guys said we're going to give everybody 65 cents. Oh, great, great, great. Hey, my two lead supervisors, Kim, can we take the money from Brandon and split it? And you guys go, yeah, because we're not spending more money. We're just moving it around? Sure.
I thought we were giving the difference to that, to Kim and Anna Mae from
No, we've redone, what the, what happened is it was Anna Mae and Tiffany, and I left the room and forgot about Kim. And I came back in and said, oh, yeah, I also need it for Kim. And you guys said, okay.
And that was on this day here?
No. And then I asked, can I tell them? And you guys said, yeah, but let them know that it depends on what the state does.
Because we won't know till August.
August, right. But I could tell them, but it depends on the state. And I told them that. I said, well, if the state gives us the money, then you guys, everybody will get the 65 and you two, you three will get a dollar on top of the 65.
I can't remember very good, I'm sorry to say, but I'm glad that Don found this because that helped. It's funny that Tiffany was the one left out, but you remember Kim was the one that you forgot to talk about and hear and you came back and
Right, because Wayne reminded me. I went back there and he goes, what about Kim? She does, she runs that jail. And I went, oh shit.
I remember that part of it.
Oh, shoot, ran back in.
So currently your question at hand is if Tiffany
Can get 65 cents.
Can get the 65 cents.
Would the dollar obviously still
Right, the dollar was already granted in the budget, but the 65 cents was not.
Okay, sir.
And then the park, the park had, we ran into park 1526 and they thought it was 14. There's a dollar 26 right there.
And it's really only 10.
Oh, really?
Did you see Jessica's memo?
Yeah, she just wanted to go ahead and plug it in as 1626. I was just saying that this would be an easy, no extra money would be spent if we adjusted it to what they
Thought it was.
Yeah.
Except that we agreed to this, out of the sheriff's budget.
Right.
And I think Jessica's right, they may not get anybody hired.
Right, oh, yeah, I'll just be facetious. Is that the right word, Don?
I think so. As HR, could I just have a, could I
Do you have a memory?
I have. Well, what I have is feedback that perhaps for Tiffany to have that raise, she should have a different job description written because a dollar
Well, probably all three of them should have the, to justify the, I mean, when people say
And I thought that was what we had talked about.
Well, their lead, like, so instead of having one supervisor, because none of them have total experience. I mean, I guess if I was to have to pick one, I'd pick Tiffany. But she's just got rehired in May, you know, and
Well, she left a while, came back.
Right, and, but after Brandon's kind of thing, we decided, look, Anna's doing the scheduling and the civil papers, which takes a lot of time. And then Tiffany's doing training and seogen and stuff. And then helping me now with the new 911 system being put in. She's going to be going to those meetings, which they're all phone meetings, and taking those. So they're both busy and doing a lot. It just, so I thought this would be nice to keep them. And Kim does the ordering for the jail, the prisoner transport ports, getting him ready for court. She does all the stuff that like Ronnie was doing and all that. That's why we have seven for the jail so that Kim's at seven. She can be free to manage the jail while six guard the jail in a sense. So they're all three doing more work than the others.
Would you, in your free time, be able to type up or have drafted up, you know, a job description that suggests or lists those additional duties so that
I'm sure we can come up with something, yeah. Okay.
And then on what you're going to call that?
Lead
Yeah, lead
Lead dispatcher position, one and two.
And then what they entail?
Sergeant of the jail, because she is the sergeant, so. Which Anna Mae was getting ready, well, sorry, I can't say.
Again, as HR, I will just clarify. No, the concern was only having an employee that was here for such a short period of time getting such a large raise. And so for her, that's why the job description change might be
Yeah, it's not the time here, it's the job.
And, right, because
And the responsibility, right.
Right.
Yeah, that's why we can get that on all three of them to help. I mean, you came in and you articulated it and persuaded us, but probably would be good if we also had it on a piece of paper to describe those. We've had to do that piece of paper before on people's jobs, right? And it says right here, you're supposed to da-da-da-da-da and you're not wanting to do da-da-da-da-da, so. We've had people that didn't want to do the job that they signed up for later, changing their minds.
All right.
So do we need to change our salary resolution? Or the Salary schedule, I guess, was it just update the salary schedule?
Yeah, to include that countywide 65 cent raise to her. Yeah, well, I'm glad that Don found the minutes because that's what's kind of persuading me that I guess that was Okay, all right, Sheriff Toth, it sounds like we have consensus here with Wayne and Lori that that probably is, these minutes are correct, so we'll have to have that adjustment made.
And me and Wayne will write something up.
Yeah, maybe just by Halloween.
Yep.
Okay.
The Halloween Eve.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so this isn't an action item at all. We've, we've come in here, you're going to hear the same thing you guys heard, but this is official. I finally put it on the agenda so I can talk about it officially. So just jail updates we need. And we just did come up with an incident. We do need, we do need, we do need new cameras, digital ones, not the analog ones, need to be pulled. But we need to redo the camera system and we need extra cameras where we don't have cameras right now. And they would have caught a couple incidents that maybe somebody's been accused of something and we don't know because nobody was there to witness it.
Confirm or deny.
Right, and so we're just, you know, we're kind of stuck. So, but if there would have been a camera where we want to put it, then we would have had everything. We also want two cameras up in Dispatch to see what's going on up in there when nobody's around. Like, are they on their phones? Are they goofing off? What are they doing? Including the jail staff, what are they doing? Are they sleeping at that desk? What? You know, we don't know. And that also comes back to the scan thing that I want. That would keep those jailers, because they have to actually physically scan those things. So that means they're physically walking around and doing what they're supposed to be doing. Right now, it's just they pencil in, I did my check. Well, I don't know, assuming they're doing it. I like to believe I can, I'm trusting them and nothing's come up yet, thank God. So, but down the road, you know, like we, like Jessica net said, down the road, maybe, you know, after the first of the year, we see how the jail's going and all that. But I just wanted to let you guys know that there's some updates that I think we're going to need. The only one update I'd really like to get to, and it's not even with the jail, it's the door scanning, scanning to get in the doors and get rid of these keys. Because we got keys out there. We had an agent, narcotics agent, just walk through or just come in. We're like, whoa, whoa, and he had a key. We're like, what the heck? So
What was the cost of that? Do you remember?
It's, no, I want to say it's, because we want three doors. We want that outside door, this door, and our evidence room door. It's less than 20,000. I mean, I'd have to look. And I think DIS could do it, or whatever our internet people could do it.
And that money could come out of the COVID.
Yeah, that's what I figured. That's kind of what we had earmarked down the road. That and the cam, because the cameras weren't, I think that was only 30,000 for all the and then we were going to do the whole building plus your cameras out here, hallway camera here, updated so we can catch, cover her doorway to her office and that. So like if there was an incident like that one time that we catch whoever's standing there arguing with her, whatever.
That was you, wasn't it?
I'm going to have, I'm going to have a remote control that shuts the camera off and I go
Oh, yeah, you want a key, key for her door?
Or I'll hold a picture that just shows nobody standing there.
I'm just kidding, a little levity.
That was good.
So, yeah, so, but the door thing, we'd like just, but I'll get an exact number. And then if I put it on the agenda for an action item down the road, if you guys want to do it. I mean, it's not a huge thing. It just, those things are like, ah.
Is that, which one was the marshal saying that they might be able to pay?
That's if, so they're, they're putting together a contract for us to sign the $79 a day. It's either $78 or $79 a day fee. And then they said after that's done, they think by the first of the year or sometime around there, they're going to come into that program called CAPS. And that's where jails can put in, and we'd have to do, this one that we did is a, that we're doing is going to be a three-year contract, which yes, it'll be brought into you guys and all that. But the CAPS is a 10-year contract. And it says we can hold up to, that'll be, we can hold up to 10 prisoners for them. Which is basically kind of like the same kind of grabbing, but it's kind of like we guarantee the beds to them. And they get, and we can increase our daily limit. And we can also increase our transports and all that limit that we have, like from what we're, they're going to pay now on this new contract coming.
When are, when are we going to get that contract, do you know?
I emailed her the other day and said, first I said, well, can we just start charging the new price now? And she's like, no, we're still doing, we're writing up the contract and we'll get it to you. So, yeah, that's all I know.
Well, if we're getting the old price, we won't see until St. Patrick's Day.
Yeah.
We got three of them in right now under the old price, which I think is $59 a day.
Yeah, as soon as we can get that contract would be great.
Yeah.
I just don't want to go through like we have done, we still haven't gotten one for the highway patrol, have we?
No.
Well, that's Ellen, not Don.
Well, you're right, yeah, yeah, bed, yeah.
Well, there was a discussion with the captain, so we'll see. But supposedly they're going to be out by October, according to their new landlord. So we'll see. And then, so then the next thing is printer discussion? I thought when we talked about, we wanted a, you know, big office printer, copier machine instead of our little ones, kind of like what we have up in Dispatch, well, exactly like we have up in Dispatch. And you guys said, yeah. And I thought even her said, you just talked to KLN and
Casey.
Casey. Great, call them. And the first time we talked to them, they go, well, you have one in Dispatch. I said, I know, but the deputies, we want one back here. And they say, okay. And then, well, then now months have passed. I was like, hey, where's our printer? So I pick up the phone, I call KLN, I go, hey, did that? And first, first there was a discussion, did we even have the first conversation? I'm like, yes, we did. And then she's like, oh, well, here, you call them. We don't have anything to do with that. So I had to call the sales lady and get her on and get stuff going. And she sent me a quote, and then, so I was going to run it by you guys, but I guess it comes out of my budget anyways. It's $113 a month to have it.
Is it the same one that has the one in Dispatch? Same outfit? And they won't give a combined break or?
I did, I didn't ask that question, I guess, but she knew that we had that one in Dispatch. So, but I just thought, we were talking, it's like, because I asked HR, didn't they say that they're supposed to handle this and that they
Yeah, the computers and printers and the stuff, isn't that supposed to go through?
Now, I know DIS, I called them because I know DIS is like, always call us. But they're like, no, something like that, you get, and then we can make it work. They always work with their stuff. And I'm like, okay.
Well, how did you get your printer? Was that through DIS?
I called DIS and then later found out, after you had that discussion in here, I was supposed to go through Casey to go through DIS. I totally just spaced out and picked up the phone and called DIS.
But that printer was through DIS?
Yes.
Right.
Right, but I believe it was determined that we have to go through IT.
But, no, but I'm saying, you're saying that DIS said they don't do that anymore?
No, DIS does, does do that.
Oh, okay.
They just don't do that, just show a printer. But the little printers, they want you to at least call them so that they can tell you if it'll work with their computers and system. Because they don't want you to go out and spend, buy a printer.
So the one Don had isn't big enough.
I don't know.
Don got one from DIS.
And now it doesn't work? Well, that's on them.
No, 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 no.
It works.
But you said, no, they, they told you they don't do bigger commercial ones. So Don does not big enough?
She doesn't have a big, do you have one like Dispatch, the big, you know, the big
No, no.
Right, so they do those. Those are like the little printers on your desk. They do those. Well, they sell you those or they buy them and send them to you, charge you. But they don't sell or have anything to do with the big ones. The big ones they know are going to work with the system, like with their internet and that, and their phone line.
What happened to that big one that we used to have that used to be in that?
Well, it didn't work. It was a screaming machine. And DIS said they couldn't fix that. That was out of, you know, it was old, out of warranty, not fixable.
So anyways, I didn't know if you wanted another cost to get the
So they're telling you $113 a month and that's unlimited copies, paper?
No.
No?
That's .008 cents per black and white copy. That's extra. And then if you do, if you do color, it's .05, 5 cents a copy. So they're going to make it automatically black and white. You have to enter a code. You have to enter a code to be able to print color. And then that code will tell me what officer did that. So we could say, hey, why are you printing in color? So. Let's see where the jailer is.
Yeah, he would just walk behind her in the home. She was running, he was walking.
Oh. I wonder if this is the one they released, they just released. She's been this way the whole time.
Oh.
Her family's supposed to come, be here yesterday to pick her up.
Oh.
So maybe they're here now. All right, so then the 911 system, we have training on the 14th with the two lead dispatchers. I turned over the meetings and all that to Tiffany because they're asking me about the Dispatch Council. And I don't know any of that. So, you know, a dispatcher would. So since Tiffany's the training and seogen, I put her in charge of that. So she'll be doing the conversations with them. And then she, then her and Anna Mae do the training in this room on the 14th, the first set of training. And then, and then after that, once they start installing it, then they'll start bringing dispatchers one at a time and training them or multiple at a time. I don't know how it's going to go, but training them on the system. So it's pretty in-depth and quite a bit to it's going to change a lot of stuff up front. But in a new way for them to do stuff. And our radios are acting up and every day at, now it was at 3:30 yesterday, but usually around 4:30, they just cut out. The Dispatch does, she can't broadcast out and they have to reset it in the back room. We don't know why.
Luckily, it's an hour of the day where maybe deputies aren't
Right.
active or busy because it's
Well, they're all come on at about noon and then two and then three. So they're all handling calls about that time. So, I don't know.
Oh, you meant the afternoon? I thought you meant 3:30 in the morning.
No, in the afternoon.
Oh, I thought you meant 3:30 in the morning.
No, so then they send, we've trained a couple of jailers on how to reset it. And so they just go reset.
So is Mr. Stein coming out to visit?
I don't know. Every time he comes, it costs us a lot of money, so I try to restrict him coming. I did get ahold of Horizon Corporate.
Oh.
And they found the contract.
Oh, good.
They first said there was no contract, then they said, oh, we found it. And we are, we are able to move the microwave to the tower.
That might make all the difference and you wouldn't have to worry about
Well, because then we can move it to the fire hall. Because you can see a straight shot to the fire hall.
Right.
But we have to have it moved before 2023 because the contract expires at that time. So the guy's like, you better get it over there if you're going to get it over there. But there now
Because then that would eliminate this whole 60-foot tower and
I would think so.
Fire hall's a nice safe entity for that microwave to be on.
Right, and they said they, they've said that we can do it now. I haven't heard it from the city, but I've heard it from the fire chief. So, I don't know. But they, the only thing I'm waiting for Verizon to get back to us on is who do we hire to climb their tower because they only allow certain people or certain certified type people. So I called them and said, hey, when am I going to here? And the guy goes, well, we're all down in Louisiana right now, so it's going to be a little bit. So they're down there with the hurricane fixing stuff.
Fix some towers.
But as soon as they get done, then hopefully. But I don't think that's what's causing, it's like a computer thing or something that we have to reset.
Oh, yeah.
That reset part.
Yeah, that part.
That'll help with the, I would think with the
With the snow
perception and that, yeah, so.
Yeah, and you'd be able to reach further out down the canyon.
You would hope so.
Yeah.
So anyways, and then I don't know what the shift differential remedy discussion is. Somebody told me to put that on here.
Yeah, we were wondering if, so currently the dispatchers have a set of differential pay
They have three shift differentials and deputies have two. Dispatch and detention have three shift differentials and the deputies have two.
And there's different rates, so like the swing shift for deputies is 50 and then their graveyard is 75. And then the dispatchers have a
There's a, they, they don't get anything for days, but then 50 cents for swings and 75 for graves. And it's just been a problem forever. Nobody gets their, gets it right. So it, by the time it gets to me, when I preview payroll, it's the employee that puts it down, then the supervisor does it, check it, and it's not right. Well, then KLN, it gets to KLN, it's not right. So then by the time it gets to me, it's just a nightmare.
So where it's a problem is if, like, if a deputy comes out at, say, 4 o'clock, so that, oh, two of his hours are at swings where he's getting 50. And then after 6 PM it's grave, they're not adding up the hours right. They're either doing them all at 75 cents or all at whatever. And they're all, they're always, Lori's always having to pull her hair out and
And then like on, I think, detention, one starts at 7:00. So you've got one hour at graveyard, then you've got eight hours a day, and then you've got one hour at swing. But then they, sometimes they get it flipped around and, I mean, it's just, it's just a nightmare. So we're just
Wondering if we just took the two, the differentials and averaged them and then just said regardless of what shift, when you're working, you get 60 cents, you know, instead of this, sometimes 75, sometimes 50, some, you know. If it was just, then people could do their time cards without sitting there messing up their hours because it's just really difficult for
Right.
I mean, it'd be different if, if they knew how to do it and they did it right. Or if they don't, that they're, whoever's doing the time cards and signing off on them, took the time to do them and do them right. But by the time they're done wrong by the employee and they're done wrong by the guy signing the time card, then KLN doesn't have time to go through 60 employees and make sure they're all doing it right. So she just pays.
She pays whatever's on there.
Because people don't have time to go and go through and help, hold people's hand. And we'll just make it be 60 cents and then nobody has to sit there and overthink their brain or whatever's going on when they fill out their time card. We just thought we'd average the numbers and just say, if you're working a shift, whether it's swing or graveyard, you get 60 cents. And then that way you don't have to sit there and wonder about when the cutoff is for swing and graveyard. It's just 60 cents.
So 60 cents they average or are they just throwing that out right now?
No, KLN did it. I think she said the average was like 60, 62 or 63 cents. So we either round it down or round it up, but I don't want to make it be 62 cents.
And this is for everybody, including deputies?
Yeah, the deputies, they, they just have two. They have
Right.
For whatever reason, back when they had a union, just for showing, they don't even have a a shift that there is not a differential. They, they get 50 cents for coming to work on a day shift and they get 75 cents when they're working a graveyard. So, but the dispatchers, I think, they don't get it in the middle of the day. They would get 50 cents after 5 PM or something and then they would get 75 after midnight.
Yeah, from 8:00 in the morning till 4:00 in the afternoon, they don't get anything. And then from 4:00 till, I don't know, like 8:00 to 1600 and then 1600 to 2400 and then 2400 to 800. I mean, it's
I have to talk to them.
Yeah, and I mean, put the ball in their court. If they want to start doing the time cards right, then we don't have a problem.
Right.
But no one's getting, I mean, it's just so frustrating. And sometimes, point this out, sometimes they're
Losing money. Losing money.
Losing money, and Lori's correcting it so that they get the correct. But it's too much time being spent on the whole thing.
Yeah, when it's taken me five hours to preview payroll, it's just getting to be.
The deputy's testing, uh, app, because remember Kellan said, I don't care what time cards.
Look like.
So they're testing, one of them is testing a, an app time card that has everything figured out, and it, all they do is say what day they worked, and the time they started, and the time they left home. And then it's supposed to calculate everything, he claims. He's testing that alongside his regular time card. He's gonna send it, then he emails a spreadsheet to Kellan supposedly. I've been told this thing's wonderful. And I just said, you know what? Test it alongside your normal one, and we'll see what Kellan says. If she says that works and that looks fine, then I'd be okay, because she's the one that said we could come up with our own. But you better make sure it covers everything. Oh, yeah, you know, something like, well, let's see. So anyhow, um, but yeah, I'll, I'll bring it up to the dispatchers, jailers and deputies, and I'll say they want to average it out.
I mean, I've even threatened to say, if it's wrong, you're not gonna, I mean, for that paper, you're, you're not gonna get it, you know, hoping that they would get it right the next time. But it's, it's never right the next time.
Right. Right. Um, yeah, well, I, I think that makes sense. I mean, I'm for it. I just gotta see what they say, you know. I assume, I assume the dispatchers and jailers aren't gonna have a problem with that. I just want to make sure the deputies.
And there is no union. We don't want to take it away from them entirely. We want to try and make it where it least.
Easy enough for everybody. Right. No, I know how to explain it. That they can get it right. It's the best.
Or do like Roman said on the highway patrol, if you start on graves, your, your whole shift is paid for graves, or if you start on days, your whole, you know, but if.
Instead of an hour and a half here and five hours there and three hours there.
Yeah, we'll, I'll talk to them.
Yeah, and just stress it's because they're not doing them right. I mean, it has nothing to do with, want to take anything away, just. And Port Wayne, I mean, he signs off on the time card, but he, and then he's more confused because the deputies have a different time slot for their starting of swing shift and graveyard than the dispatch. So he's sitting there going, ah.
Yeah, I have a little cheat sheet that I have to use each time, you know, and I mean, I've been doing it for I don't know how many years, but still, it's, it's confusing.
And we jumble them around so much that their shifts, so, yeah. No, that's fine. We'll talk to them.
If they don't mind just 60 cents, I mean, because it should work out in the wash, you know, if you're bumping around on the schedule and it all evens out in the end of the year, I would think, unless someone's stuck on graveyard for the whole year, then, then they're losing maybe that 20, 20 cents or whatever it is, but.
Yeah.
But I mean, if they, if they all kind of jump around and it's all, makes no difference, then that would be easy for their time card.
Right. Yeah, I agree. Well, I have no problem with that. I just gotta make sure they're not gonna throw a fit.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I mean, it's something you don't have to pay, you know, so.
Well, we'll talk to them about that. So a quick year in review, real quick. The department, I think we've done well so far since we've taken over this first year. We've gotten a lot accomplished, and I think you guys have seen that. I think deputies are handling their calls a lot better, and morale's high right now at this point in time.
That's good.
Um, you know, I think, I'm hoping, I see that the federal unemployment runs out again. Unless they re-up it again, it runs out, I think, on Monday. So hopefully there'll be people looking for jobs more now. There's plenty of jobs in the county and everywhere else that hopefully people will start applying. We've only still got the one app HR.
One came in today.
Two apps, magical. So hopefully we'll get some more, um, because we gotta get two jailers hired. Two of our jailers leave for the academy next week for two weeks, and then, um, one of our deputies leaves for the academy on the 14th. He'll be gone for three months. So.
And you're able to fill in the slots okay with those absences while they're away?
Yeah, because the one deputy we, the one jailer we hired as a deputy is staying a jailer until.
Till they get.
Till they get done with the two-week academy for them. And then he'll start FTO.
So, um, I, G, you know, they're trying to have like a little program for some of the people that are gonna be without work, kind of like career fair, training.
Job fair.
Yeah, job fair. And somebody suggested maybe we send Don down there to be at the job fair to help let him know what kind of jobs.
Where's this gonna be at?
At community center.
When?
Uh, 14th of September. That's the day the dispatchers are training in here too.
Yeah, but I could send like, I can see where Kim is, and Kim can go with her, talk about the jail.
She can wear a uniform.
Mm-hmm. And Wayne can go, because I'm gonna be in Billings, but.
Because, I'm, and I guess I brought that up because do you foresee a need for attracting some good employees?
Yeah, we got two open jail spots and one dispatch spot. And we possibly have another dispatch spot in December. Because she's already told me she's gonna leave.
And then I was thinking also, your deputy, you're okay on deputies now?
Okay on deputies right now.
I was only thinking if we ever, if you thought there was gonna be an opening or one.
Well, there's no problem making a list.
Yeah, well, and also, yeah, because the biggest problem with Mineral County when you want to get a deputy is one.
Move it.
One who wants to stay here, move here and stay here and be.
Right.
Worth the training.
Right.
Two, for him to find a house.
Right.
So I thought, oh, if there's some people that are needing work, and we, and we had a good decent local person want to be a deputy, a good decent local person would stay here and live here, and it wouldn't be this revolving door that sometimes occurs. Like on highway patrol, nobody's living here anymore.
Right.
Except for the sergeant and one other guy.
Right. Yeah, well, and exactly, and the jail, of course, we need two jailers, so absolutely. And we tend to have, the reason we tend to have a couple openings in jail all the time is because some people get in there and it's not what they think, or they're getting intimidated. I mean, it's hard work dealing with those prisoners, and they can be very intimidating. And you have to have the right.
Personality.
Personality to get along with them, but yet also stay in charge of them.
Right.
And, and the last two that have left didn't leave on bad terms. They just said it wasn't for them. They didn't like it, you know, so we didn't hold anything against them. We said, okay, no problem. And then the reason there's two is because then the one we hired is a deputy, so that's what created the second one. So, um, you know, we'll bring, if we can get some people to try it out, or, you know, and I have no problem, somebody, if, you know, somebody asks if they can come sit up in dispatch and see what they're doing, or if there's a dispatch hire applicant that would like to see, well, what exactly is dispatch? Maybe I don't want the job, maybe I want it. Kind of like a ride along in a sense, but.
Well, do you, do we foresee any need for Don to be in the courthouse on the 14th? When, oh, you have your safety thing. That was the first conflict. September 14th, when any of the.
Oh, yeah, I had to move it. Yeah.
So a different day?
Yeah.
So you're free on the 14th?
I am. Yeah.
All right. Do we, do we see any other need for Don to be here if she went down to that job?
It'd be a good idea.
We get along just fine.
Yeah? So we don't have to set up a camera down there, do we? What time did you say that was, Wayne?
I can tell you. Because IFG actually is the one that emailed me. So I can tell you.
I had it wrote down on a piece of paper at home.
I mean, we're, I mean, that's just like we're gonna go talk to the high school kids when they graduate. Some don't go to college, some, you know, they stick around. Hey, 18, you can get jobs at jail.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea if you and Don coordinated and like you say, take Kim or someone to represent in uniform, how, and talk about the job. That might be not only good for us, but good for some folks who aren't even in the world, you know.
No, that's just like the job fair when the schools, I assume, have job fairs at the end of the year or something. I'd like to do that, you know, Mean Lab, we've already talked, or Kennedy, we've already talked about.
I know that, um, I had somebody ask me about the application, or, you know, putting in an application, and their big concern was because of the severance package or something from IFG, they would have to actually work until the end of October, the 1st of November, in order for them to get the severance package. And I said, well, I'm sure that we could, I mean, if they're a good applicant, I would think that we'd be able to work with them as to what their starting day would be, so.
And I will tell you that one person who came in and inquired immediately, he said, you know, I have to be able to work till November, but I could work all weekends. I could work Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays, until I'm available full-time. I thought, wow, that's a go-getter.
Somebody who would be wanting to come on their day off and kind of start training or learning.
But I haven't received his application yet. I'm confident I will.
Yeah, I mean, stuff we talk about, yeah, absolutely.
That job fair is nine to four on the 14th.
Okay. I'll see if Kim works that day. That's a Tuesday, isn't it? Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, she's here, so just tell her on the 14th, make yourself available.
If we're gonna stretch it out to where we make it available till this severance deal is over, we're gonna have to do that for everybody. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think anybody that has that severance deal, yeah.
No, but anybody that applies, why would, I mean.
Oh, you mean, so even if they're not at IFG, you would keep the job open until?
Well, I think you'd have to.
Okay.
I mean, wouldn't you? You'd have to treat them all the same.
Well, I think I'd just say, when can you start? If they say, start two weeks, great, start two weeks. If they say, well, I gotta wait a month, then we'd, yeah, we'd have to give them.
Well, yeah, they'd interview the people, and then after, if they got selected, we want to hire you, Bob. And then he goes, oh, I can start tomorrow. Oh, I happen to work at IFG, can I start? But yeah, because we're gonna pick the qualified people, and then we'll adjust once we learn their situation.
And so wouldn't that all be solved by open until filled?
Yes, which it says, open until filled. Yeah. Um, yeah. So I mean, other than keeping employees that kind of rotate through, I mean, deputies we've kept other than the ones that have left. Um, we've, everything's been going good. It's a good crew. I think the one we hired is gonna get along. We're sad to see the one leave. And, you know, equipment-wise, we're doing good. We'd like to get that eighth car. We're gonna be working on Stone Garden for that. We've been getting new equipment from Stone Garden. We just got this new fancy scope to look in gas tanks and.
Well, you got one of the, I thought you were wanting to buy that.
It holds a thing, and it's got a picture, video picture, and feed it to gas tanks and feeding that.
So how did they, whatever they're gonna store in the gas tank, how do they protect that from?
They, usually they cut the gas tank and have to put a wall in there.
Oh.
So only half it's got the gas, so it doesn't carry much gas. So when you go in there, you hit a ding, well, hold on, that thing should be a lot longer. So, um, that's one way they do it. So, and then of course, in the vents, so instead of the guys having to tear the dash apart to look, they just sneak that back there. Now we're not damaging somebody's car, everything else. And then the same with the door looking into the doorways. So, and we're trying to get Stone Garden to buy us a handheld x-ray thing, which we think they'll do that here next. So we're getting us some nice equipment. It's not coming out of our money at all, so it's nice. Any guys have been working it for their overtime and that? So.
Did you get that, I forwarded that email, something to do about the cops grant?
Yeah, I was gonna ask.
I forwarded it to you yesterday.
Oh.
Did you send it to me too?
Well, no, it came to you.
Oh.
It came to you.
Yeah, so I asked.
And.
I asked, I sent it to Wayne saying, hey, what the heck is this about? Because him and, oh, him and, was it Jennifer, the girl that helped?
Jess.
Jess. She's been really helpful with Wayne. They've been working as a team to get it straightened out. I thought it was straightened out. Wayne said he was waiting for a login, a new login.
Yeah, it says action required. 2020 Mineral County cops hiring awardant complete Jess Grant enrollment.
Right. He claims that he's been waiting for them to send him his new password. He's off until Tuesday. So on Tuesday, he'll get on it, find out what's going on. And I'm assuming Jess will help him. She's been helpful with him, so willing to answer questions.
Is there, are they giving us a deadline? And there's a phone number too. I guess we could, maybe you could call and say, hey, our, our guy will be here Tuesday. Can you help us there? Just so they don't think we're ignoring them, I guess.
Yep.
Award incomplete Jess Grant's enrollment. So.
So we're happy with everything. So just moving forward now, keeping the jail open and running.
How many, how many needs do we have in the jail?
We had 13 yesterday, and if she just, if she got released, like I think, then we're down to 12.
How many are our own?
Why isn't she coming in?
I'd say maybe four or five.
Oh, okay. So we got about nine or 10 paying customers in there.
We get them out pretty quick that are ours unless they're felonies. There's one that's ours. He's got a thousand-dollar bond, and we were hoping he'd make the bond, but he hasn't made the bond to get them out, but.
Aren't you gonna help him? Don't you got any money?
I got that endless.
Pass the hat.
Yeah.
So when are you gonna be gone again?
I'm gonna go back to Billings on the 10th.
Of September?
Yep.
But you'll be back on the 14th?
No.
He's not, he'll be back on the 14th.
He didn't be back after that. Yeah.
You could do that job fair Zoom if you want.
Yeah, there you go. Well, I got some recruiting ideas that I want to do, and I'm gonna see, I'm gonna call the college and see if they got any film students there and do a little video. If they want to do a class project, a little shoe improvement video. Yeah, so I've been trying to, now that school's started, gonna give it a little bit and call over there.
And when did you say you'd be back?
I don't know for sure. Probably the 20th, which is, so we got a week roughly. Back to work on the 20th here.
Yeah. I was standing downhill. I looked short.
Yeah, I see that. He's gonna have you autograph that for me.
I didn't know. I had such a frown on my, I must have known what was coming in that day, subconsciously.
At that time, you guys had no idea.
No, they did. The governor didn't have a clue.
We all feel like fools.
I understand. He can only piss off.
Yeah, really.
Because he should.
Yeah, because he was sitting there talking about, yeah, we're looking forward to your third shift, and that'll be great. Let me know, I can help get you guys on that third shift and.
Well, maybe Mineral County should buy it, open it up.
It's not for sale.
I don't think it's for sale.
Oh, really?
Nothing will be auctioned off or sold.
Although the IFG bought the Cruzan timber sale last week.
Yeah, well, they're proximity in Idaho. They can still get the old, they were trucking the logs over there anyway. They're oversized, and they got the rail and log trucks and.
All right.
All right. Well, thanks for the updates and.
I'll talk to the guys and the ladies and find out what they want to do.
Yeah.
I think it makes sense to do a 60, 65 cent average. So.
Just do one.
Swings and nights, all one?
Yep.
Yep.
All right.
Resolution requesting distribution of bridge and road safety, basically the Barca, Barca money from gas tax. Let's see. Got this one? Yeah. Yeah, here's this. Okay. A resolution requesting distribution of the Barca money, bridge, road, safety, accountability program funds. Whereas a bridge and road safety and accountability count requires a Montana DOT to allocate accrued funds to cities, towns, counties for construction, reconstruction, maintenance, roads, city or town, streets, alleys, bridges, that the town or county or consolidated city, county government has a responsibility to maintain. And whereas a city or town or county government that requests these funds under the bridge and road safety accountability count must match each $20 requested with a $1 of their local government matching funds. And whereas a city or town or county requesting these allocated funds may make such a request to the DOT between March 1 and November 1 of the year, the funds were allocated. And whereas a project should be funded, it's Mineral County paving and chip ceiling with an estimated project completion date of October 2021. Whereas a local match for the allocated funds. project completion date of October 2021. Whereas, a local match for the allocated funds has been budgeted from Mineral County Road Fund 2110, appendix A, okay, 2110 and our gas tax, Barca, roads, asphalt and asphalt filler. Currently, there's money in there available. The appropriated 66,000, it's $59,000 in it, and they're committing 7,300 must be the matching amount. Mineral County requests distribution of its share of the allocated bridge and safety accountability funds to be used for the projects identified herein that the commission hereby empowers and authorizes a commissioner or other staff to execute such further documents as may be necessary to facilitate the distribution of said funds. So, this resolution would be adopted, if we adopt it, on this third day of September 2021, resolution number 9-3-2021. Yeah. Please remember to get your, this is from Jason at Miko. Please remember to get your request for the Barca funds in. If you do not make the request, the $66,480 due to your county will be diverted back into the pot, and I do not want to see that happen. So, local government needs to make their request by submitting this request between March 1 and prior, and by November 1. So, here we are on September, making that said request.
of bridge and road safety and accountability program funds.
I would second that motion.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None are opposed. Okay, so, now, we're done for seven minutes until Mary Arnold comes over the school budget at 10 o'clock. We're here with Mary Arnold. Yeah, school budgets fiscal year '22 action item.
Beautiful day. Again, I can't believe how nice it is.
Might even be a nice weekend.
Looks like it, huh?
No smoke.
Right.
Yeah, anyway.
Easy, yeah.
Thank you.
I don't know. I'm assuming Don needs one.
Hey.
Hey, Jim.
Hey, Jim.
So, Superior and Alberton have went down, Superior total mills went down 31.69, Alberton went down 30.36.
But where is that column? Where is that?
Well, I have the budgets from last year.
Oh, you just compared, okay. So, say that again. Alberton went down how much?
Alberton went down 30.36 mills. Superior went down 31.69 mills. And both, now, of course, I, because it's such a significant jump, which usually doesn't happen, I, you know, wanted to know the whys. Era said, my taxable value went up, which they did, and the amount I needed to levy for transportation went down by quite a bit. So, that's her difference.
Uh-huh.
Autumn stated that they lowered theirs per advice from OPI. They didn't want us taxing our town for more than what we said we would if we could help it. And they did have a deficit in previous years that they've made up, so they didn't need to...
Assess the full.
Yeah. And then, I wrote to Tina also because hers went, went up from last year, 1.83 mills. But I didn't get a response from her why. But, you know, we've gone over the budgets there. They all are within lines of what they, you know, their reserve is, what their limits are. Everything looks good. So, I don't know the why on hers, or why, you know, theirs went down. Maybe they didn't receive as much, or are not gonna receive as much money this next year as they got last year. I really can't tell you on that. I don't. But OPI does set all the limits on all these, these line items, except for building reserve on, like, St. Regis. Last year, they levied for a, a permissive levy. And last year, it was... Last year, their, their building levy was 10.23 mills, and 4.05 was the permissive. It's down a little bit, so I don't know if they have put it all just on the voted mills or additional for the permissive. Like I said, I did have an email out to her, but it hadn't gotten a response.
So, take, for example, we're looking at St. Regis, so he said, building reserve, and it says, adopted budget of 332,000, and then total reserves is zero. But then, unreserved fund balance, 254. So, total reserves is zero, what, what, how is that correlated with the unreserved fund balance of 254?
The unreserved is what they have that they haven't appropriated yet. So, that would be money that they've got sitting there for, haven't they recently done a new?
Roof.
Yeah. So, they've got money sitting there to be used, but it has not been used yet.
Oh, so that's why it doesn't reflect at all in the total reserves, because it's already been obligated?
But it hasn't been used.
Hasn't been obligated.
Okay. So, then, like, another one to help me understand these, the OPI's limits. Like, looking at Alberton, they've got adult education. They adopted 65,000, so that's what they're proposing to spend for that program for the year? Because they adopted that budget?
Adult education, the adopted budget, but they have still money in unreserved is the, what they have is the 56,000. So, they're only levying for the 8,700.
And so, the tot, what's the, what's the 22,750 under the total reserves? Is that a remaining fund?
What they had remaining from what they had, well, that's what they have in reserves.
Mm-hmm. What happened at the, a school, does OPI say, you have so much time to spend that, otherwise, we take it back? I mean...
Not that, as long as I've been doing it, they haven't.
So, they just can maintain a large balance like that?
Yeah, well, reserve limits, like 35% would be the total amount that they could keep in reserves.
I see.
So, they do have limits that way, but not that, nope.
Because the other schools have around 9,000 or 10,000, and Alberton has 56,000 in unreserved.
Right, that they haven't, have not, that they have on reserve. They'd like to use it, but have, but they've been...
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure what they plan on spending it on. I mean, a lot of times, they'll do for adult education, for GEDs, and probably the most popular. I know Superior has tried for, like, woodworking and tried to get a few people to take some of the adult education, because they do get a certain amount from OPI for that each year.
Yeah. Okay. And then, and so then, you have, for all the, you have that F column, unreserved fund balance, reappropriate. That's includes transportation, depreciation, entire, so that column versus column B, the adopted budget, what's the correlation there between the?
So, the budget that they're adopting for, like, transportation, the additional 250,000, and they have the unreserved, and usually, they do a bus a year in Superior. So, the 118 will be the money that they have reserved, appropriated for a new bus in the upcoming year. Probably others would be a portion of salaries.
Mm-hmm.
And make the difference up is what they're actually asking for the property tax, the 93,000, the 24 mills.
Uh, we're looking at Superior when you say 93,000?
Oh.
Or who are you looking at?
I was looking at Alberton.
Oh, Alberton, okay.
And you were looking at Superior?
Okay. No, I wanna make sure. Oh, now I see the 93,000. Okay, so that again, that 93,000 is what they're looking to what?
That's, that's the tax. That's the 24.98 mills that they're asking to cover that 93,502.
Mm-hmm. What would be an example of their other revenue, other revenue, the 38,000? Column G?
For other revenue, I'm looking at Alberton, that should be what the county, the county's portion of their...
Oh, like from SRS or something?
No.
Oh.
We do, we do half of their transportation for county taxes. The other half comes from OPI. So, that would be what the percentage that we're paying. That's the taxable amount, and the county pays half of it, and the state pays the other half. OPI pays, we're at 36. So, county on our taxes, and that'll come up on separate line item on our county taxes, separate from what the school, I mean, the school gets the money, but it comes up on our county line also. The 18,205 between the county and the state for the 36. Where, where am I lying here?
Where's 18,000?
It's on the budget line, on, on schedule for the county and on schedule for the state.
Oh, different document, okay.
Right. Well, it's part of the budget, but the, that's where that...
A different document than this.
The revenue, the 38,000.
Right. So, those mills, let's go back to, like, the Alberton one that you were talking about, the 93,000, the 38,000. Those 24.98 mills, because you said the county does half and the state, are those total mills being assessed by the county and the state, 24.98, or is that just what?
Just for Alberton, for their, for that 93,000. The other revenue that's coming in is from the OPI and from the county.
Separate from the 24.98 mills, an additional amount of money?
Right.
And then, on the retirement portion, there aren't any mills at all levied on that, 212,000?
Yeah, but the other revenue, the 212 is the same, half of it from the county and the other half from OPI, which we all contribute into.
On our what? If it's not through the mills, on our taxes, where, where's that from?
It is on the mills, but it, but half of it is on our county. You don't have one of the mill sheets, do you, from the county? That is figured into our mills there. And half of it comes from the, from OPI and the other half from the county for the 212. But we don't do any, they don't have any extra mills, therefore, it's all on OPI and the county. The transportation, they get additional, other, they get additional money, and that money, more than likely for transportation, the 93,000, is so that they're gonna buy a bus each year, the 118,000 plus the fuel and upkeep on the buses. But retirement is retirement money. There's no extra money that, that, that they get besides what they get from the county and OPI.
Well, Superior's retirements double what the other two schools are. The other two schools are on.
They got about double the staff.
Oh, really? They do that much?
Because even their general fund is 2.9, and Alberton's 1.7, 1.8 for St. Regis for their adopted budget for general fund, which is where most of the salaries come out. 30, 37.32 at the bottom of their budget sheet. Last year was 51, so we're paying it down.
Oh. Yeah, I was gonna ask about that, because the other two schools don't have that number 50 debt service, zeroed out.
Yeah, that's for the... Well, when they did the whole backend of the high school.
Oh, that addition.
Took down the, the junior high and put the, added on to the school.
And the total budget adopted for Alberton is half that, 2,746,000?
Right.
And St. Regis is at 3,340,000?
Yeah, it's about, yeah, in between.
All right. All right. So no issues superintendent of schools? You just want us to adopt these individual school budgets? In the form of an action item?
Yes, please.
One at a time, or?
I, I don't...
Or how do you?
I make the motion that we approve recommended budgets for St. Regis, Superior, and Alberton for the year 2022.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion, a second, is there any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any none?
Was that the motion you were looking for?
That was first.
Yeah.
You must have done this before.
Once, huh?
Remember last year.
You're the longest, longest city commissioner here, so.
This side is a Mississippi? That's Jack Mule, did you know that?
No, really?
If he's still on.
Wow.
To start? No, to, and stopped, I mean, I started. I just didn't know. County Commissioner, and I'll find the one that's got I think she needs to sign that, and then... Yep, I do, yep, and then for Dawn, please, a copy of this here. So, Dwayne, Judith McKay, wasn't she here before?
Yeah, she was here before, yeah.
Okay, thank you, I was thinking that...
She lives at French, I had asked that too, I said, where have I heard that name?
Yeah.
They said, oh, she was here a couple of years ago. I think she was between Joe Steele and the guy before him.
Did she fill in that time also?
I think so, maybe, or maybe she just retired, I don't remember.
I'll run this upstairs. I'll run this upstairs, so she can attest it, and then I can get her.
This is, if you don't get it back.
Did you do the IFG Olympics?
For one thing, I don't have their health insurance.
Oh.
It was through their health insurance, I probably could have done it anyway.
Thank you.
All right.
Do you?
I was too busy with my other...
Your other Olympic?
Copies, or you want to, you want to do the copies of those? I don't know that, I don't know how much you need.
Yep, I'll just scan everything and then bring it back up to you.
Okay, thanks, Mary.
Thank you. At our open houses before she's donated something, and I might, I keep, I know. Okay, so the paper I gave you is just the email that I had sent out. We did get some response over email saying that they supported the request, and however, we kind of felt that it was important to come together and kind of discuss it anyway. How did you guys like the tour?
Good.
I did, I liked it.
Since I was unable to go, I was kind of disappointed about that, but I've been out there luckily before.
They, they weren't doing it because they weren't quite ready or something.
Yeah.
The rest of the tour was...
But you went back, Jim, when they were actually in motion?
Yeah, I did, they were working, mine went bad, yeah. Super operation, I'd, yeah.
Yeah. So you know, I guess, I'll just open it to discussion, since everybody has kind of already seen the packet information. Is there any questions for me regarding why it's set up how it is, or? Just the guarantees, I gave Dwayne the guarantee and contract there for now, to kind of review. Do you guys have any questions for me on, on this request?
I don't. I think she's doing great, and I certainly support it.
Okay.
Likewise.
Awesome.
I'd make a motion if you desire it.
I should do, I'd second it.
I'd third it.
So the motion is to approve for additional loan, twenty-one thousand seven-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars eighty-five cents?
Yep.
Okay. Motion, a second, any discussion, any question? Pause for a moment if anyone thinks of one.
Wasn't there something about, is she's, I don't know the word, going, going a couple of months before she starts?
So it's kind of like a deferred? Yep, so she'll have a zero interest rate until the beginning of 2022, and that's because as she goes national, I actually, I just, I was able to catch up with her a little bit yesterday, and she said that as she goes into the national market, they have categories and timelines, so depending on what category your product is in, there's only a couple of month timeline in which your product can get into the stores. So like hers is, you know, with relish, she said she's more, they classify it as a condiment, because they're not really aware of all the uses that you can use it for, so they classified it as a condiment, and she said that her timeframe would probably be in January, so that would be in January where they start reviewing that list of products for that national realm, and then they'll, you know, maybe call her in or something, but she's in the process right now of sending out samples to all of the, all of the stores that she's trying to get into, and so she's working really closely with her broker on that, but she's just not really sure when that return's going to start to come in. She does plan on making payments in the interim there, and that's kind of why I started at that amount, because she said right now she could afford that four-fifty payment, so if she was to do those payments for the next four months, that would be the amount. So really what we're looking to do, from her standpoint, is we'll call a meeting in January and kind of revisit the contract and see if that's something now that maybe she's been accepted into a couple of these stores, and she can start making those payments with no problem, or maybe we need to kind of reevaluate, maybe a lower interest rate on that. But the, the reason we went with the six percent is because if we go any lower, it's going to drag it out to nine or ten years. In all of her past loans, she's always paid off ahead of schedule, usually by a year or two, so you know, she's, when she has the cash flow, she does put it towards the loan, she's very, very forward going like that, so you know, I really have no concerns that she's going to be delinquent or anything like that on this, it's just a matter of the communication between the board and herself as she's going through this transition.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yeah.
Did you say aye?
Oh, did you go, oh, you said hi, I thought, I said, I thought you said, did you all say aye? Sir, I'm having allergic reaction, and Emily was saying she, the allergy, I guess maybe pawns and stuff are bad, and I said, oh, thank God, I was afraid of my dog.
That'd be bad, yeah, your eyes look like it.
Yeah, everything's so itchy over.
Mary just had a really bad reaction here, what, a couple of weeks ago, at work?
Oh, really?
First time it happened, she had trouble breathing, I'm like, Mary, are you having trouble breathing? And she was, she was.
Wow, yeah, I just, yeah, it's driving yesterday, yeah. Yes, I had to wear my glasses, I can't even get my contacts in.
So I do have one more question for you guys. Previously, when Kevin was here, I remember kind of just meeting during this timeframe, you know, of the regular commissioners' meetings. Is that how it's always been done, is, I mean, is there a separation between the loan board and the commissioners' meetings? I had heard before that maybe they were closed meetings, Jim, and maybe you can help out on this. I, I'm unaware if I'm starting to schedule the meetings incorrectly when I request them, if it should be a separate meeting from the commissioners' meeting, or if, if this is the way we would like to continue business.
I don't think they've ever been closed.
I don't think so either.
I think, I don't know the, the relationship between the county and the loan board. Loan board one time was an independent body, and we elected commissioners just to keep them away. I don't know whether there's a formal agreement or not.
Okay, yeah, because I was just told it's the elected officials and then a member at large, which would be yourself, and so that's kind of where I want to make sure that I'm doing things right on my end, but also, you know, that as notifying the public of this as well as protecting the privacy of the clients, and I want to just kind of make sure that all of it's covered within that, so you know, I mean, I don't know, I wouldn't have some insight on that.
And I wonder if we go back, because I, I was here when Kevin was here, so it's been in the last four and a half years or so. I would almost want to go back and look at the minutes, I know we've always been here, I feel like it's always been here.
Yeah.
I just don't remember if it was during commission meetings.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought it always had been, and then twelve years since I've been...
Because I know it's always been here.
I don't ever remember it ever being closed.
No.
Yeah, it's closed, I'd say, I mean, there might be times where, I think there was, I can think of one case where maybe we were looking at somebody's tax refund, or we got, and then we, that kind of was separate, so we want to keep that in mind.
So only really when you're looking at the financials?
Yeah, and we can almost have a discussion on, does the persons or the, the company's personal finances, do their privacy outweigh the public interest, and we can have that discussion then if we decide that, yes, it does. There was somebody, I can't remember who the heck it was, where we did do, I feel like it was tax return or something, that we said, let's, let's keep that, the public doesn't need to know, it's not going to affect, you know?
And I, and I think that was with a new client, you know, whereas Mary and them, you know, some of these repeat loans or amended contracts, I don't re-request that information, just because we, we kind of have it, everybody here kind of knows, you know, so if there is ever a time when you guys would like that information, I can request it again, but honestly, I haven't done that when we've already been working with that client.
And then just remind us to have the discussion on whether or not we think it should, that portion should be closed, because we do want to respect businesses, you know, a lot of stuff when we know with the, you know, open meetings and right to know, but there are things that I think we can make a good argument of, there's no reason for the community to know that.
Okay, okay.
So I would have a question for you then, on the agenda, I was very specific and said to approve the loan in the amount of blah, 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 and that would go in the minutes, and it's being taped, is that information confidential and should not be on the agenda?
I don't think so.
Not when, we're talking about...
Information, wouldn't it, since it's public money?
Yeah, it's public money.
It's not tax money, it's CDBG money, so I'm not really sure on that as either, you know, a lot of these revolving loan funds are managed by not the county, and you know, Sanders County has one, it's actually managed by Mission West. Mission West, which is the nonprofit, they're the ones that manage all that money for Lake County, and you know, they've kind of been trying to maybe have us looking at MCEDC also managing that money, so you know, maybe that's a conversation for the future, that would kind of get around this, and then of course, we would have kind of have a discussion of how the board would be reevaluated, if it is still the elected officials, and how, how we can have all three of you at a meeting without it having to be public, or you know, how, how that looks. So you know, I mean, that's a conversation for the future, I just, I had had a, a community member come up to me and say, hey, you know, this could be a breach of their confidentiality, you know, and I just wanted to make sure that I'm not doing that, you know, and I hadn't even seen the agenda when it was brought forth to me, so you know, we just, between Dawn and I, we just want to make sure that we're not, we're not, you know, breaching anybody's confidentiality or, or leaving information out for the public.
I think, I think we're okay right now, even the amount, you know, if, if we do see something, but I think right now, being more open is probably better, even though we are talking about a loan amount, I, I'm fine with that. I think when we start governing people's tax refunds, or maybe business past, or if they've ever had a bankruptcy, anything like that, that's when we really want to watch, watch it, but I think for right now, I think you're okay.
Okay.
But yeah, I mean, you can go ahead and research, because I, when I first became a commissioner, I remember, and that was when it wasn't being filmed, but we did go over some local people's collateral and finances and all that, and I always wondered, gee, because...
Better reports.
We're, yeah, we're a quorum of commissioners, so we have to be open, we're all three here together looking at documents.
And that's the way...
And so I thought, ooh, well, you know, luckily, or luckily, but people weren't attending the meeting, so that's personal information wasn't being perused by anybody else but us, but, yeah, but technically, when we're all together looking at things, you know, that's why Mary has the right to film, and people have the right to know, because we're all together as a three quorum here making a decision about some public monies.
And even then, all three of you were on the board?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, because they've kind of thought that that wasn't how it was at one point, and...
When I became a commissioner...
Well, since ever, I've been commissioner, and then I don't, I, I think you've had the revolving loan fund before I became commissioner, so...
Okay.
Since I've been here, it's always been...
Jim would be the most historical to know how it all came about that way, but if there are other venues to, to handle this, these decisions, that maybe we just, you know, meet one commissioner plus, you know, the other board, and then, and then it comes on the recommendation, and we just accept or deny it, but that way, the whole process wouldn't be...
Right, and, and I'm wondering if that isn't, you know, moving that fund, but it would be probably that whole economic development fund that would go into, you know, MCEDC would obviously be the choice, since I'm still managing that as well. But you know, that's kind of a future conversation, it's not anything that I plan on pushing or working on right now.
Why no one's sharing, she'd take all that information back, since you and I just shred it when we're done with it, because I figure it's not something that anybody needs to come across somewhere along the way.
Right, yeah, and you know, I mean, I have my files at the office with all of their information, and so, you know, I mean, anybody can come into my office and request that stuff as a public record, but, yeah. I just, I wasn't really sure on that, I'm kind of having some mixed discussions with people.
That thought's crossed my mind before too, but it never really became an issue, because
Okay.
our meetings were not attended.
Yeah, and I can try to do some checking too, if you do want to, you know, be mindful of that, especially if we're supposed to be.
Okay, yeah, you know, just all of my resources have it set up a little bit differently, so it doesn't really help me to ask them, because they just say, well, just take it into, into the nonprofit, and you know, that's just not where we're at right now. Time-wise, that's not something that's feasible on my end, so just wanted to kind of get a feel for how you guys were thinking.
Okay.
Well, that's all I have for today.
Okay, so with that, the discussion seems to be, no more questions, the motion by Mr. DeBree, and second is to grant the loan for twenty-one thousand seven-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars eighty-five cents to Western Montana Specialty Foods. All in favor of this action, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? Okay, I will sign the check.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
We've got public comment here now, we do have some people from the public in here, so, how's it going, everybody?
Doing good, we're feeling good as public people.
Yeah.
Thank you for getting rid of the smoke and nice clothes.
Yeah, that was all we were doing.
We did, that is one thing we did.
Yep, and you can thank Jerry Doctor, because he gave lots of water to help with it.
Yeah. We pumped a lot of water on St. Regis.
The aquifer go down?
I just know that pump sitting there was used a lot.
Oh, it was used steady for quite a while.
Oh, two weeks before they were done with it, Carol said she had talked to him, and they'd pumped over a million gallons then. That was two weeks before they ever pulled out, so they probably, over two million gallons, I mean.
Well, the only complaint I saw was the... Well, the only complaint I saw was the, there was some people that lived right behind there, and they said that they would run out of water once in a while.
From their while.
Shell, or aquifer wells.
Well, and I mean, they were just right.
Yeah.
Right in their backyard, so.
Tammy at the post office said that when they were pumping, you couldn't get any water out of, out of the post office. But they don't have a pump on the post office, it's just running off the art agents. And so every time he was pulling on it, it was, take everything.
Remember that complaining?
There was that comment of Jensen, when Jensen's irrigated.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you remember that meeting, yeah. That got pretty heated.
Yeah.
But I mean, at least this went.
This was emergency stuff.
Yeah, this went to good cause or, and I don't think, I never did hear of anybody complaining of art heating well. I mean, other than Tammy, and she didn't have, they don't have a pump on that, which amazes me.
So, we have this bad news, so is there discussion from you guys on that? I know Dwayne has his opinions.
Yeah. Well, we were just there Thursday with the governor, and there was not a peep mentioned about it at all.
Yeah, I'm sorry I missed that, but I had a pretty good excuse.
I think that it was kind of a, the governor's deal was kind of a surprise to Willie. You know, he kind of talked like, the governor's coming, you know, what'd he tell you like two days before?
Yeah, he did, to me too. He's, he knew, well, I think it, he might have known the week before, but he didn't even know details.
But he didn't know what, any details and.
And I had called the Helena office and, and talked to Glenn Opel, and, and he did tell me that the plan was he was going to be at the mill at like 11:00 or 10:30, but he was supposed to be in Thompson Falls by 1:00.
Yeah, and then Libby after that.
So you knew there wasn't too long of visit, which, and the reason I checked that out, because I just wondered whether it was even worth it for me to try and come back early from where I was. I figured whistle stop at the mill wasn't, wasn't much, but to not even say anything, it's kind of strange.
It is. It, it sure caught everybody off guard there.
I'd just comment that I'm hoping, you know, that they reconsider and they find production in places where they say they don't have production, or, you know, they kind of alluded that there wasn't maybe adequate timber supply, which again, I just.
No, they never, they never.
Well, they said something in there that they were going to reevaluate their.
Well, yeah, 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 the other letter from the owner.
The bigger letter from Mike Emily was saying, you know, we're going to reevaluate.
In 2022, we'll take a look at it.
Yeah, and I talked, Tom Schultz called me, and he, and I asked him if that was any part of the problem, and he said, no.
No, that's what he told me.
Yeah, he said the timber supply, the way things have worked out. And that's the other thing, I think, from the county aspect, there's been a lot of work that has gone on, a lot of monthly meetings to keep that timber supply and work with the Forest Service and get it going. And I think that's something that the appeal has to go back to them and say, you know, we really, we were here to help you out.
Yeah, we've been badgering the Forest Service, and they've been.
And we need, we need you to consider that. And the, the amount of people we have that are going to be off work, and like Emily had said, we don't want those people leaving the county if we can. We want people to stay in the county. I do think we have a lot of jobs to offer. You look at, everybody needs truck drivers, and, and everybody, all these houses that are being built, we need carpenters, and, and we need cement finishers. And we have roadwork and driveways, and we have sewers to put in. And I think if we can, if we can get something going to retrain and to get it, and maybe Emily had, well, she has more to add. But I think that's something that somehow the commissioners need to try to put an appeal on, on Idaho Forest Group and say, you know, help us along with this. You're, you're leaving us high and dry, and we, and we helped you, so help us back with some training programs. And I know there's, there are programs, and I, I'm not going to say anything about that yet, I'm checking into, there's some, some state stuff that may go on, and there are apprentice programs too, and I haven't got the details. But I think that's somewhere we need to think about going, is, is to provide training for those people to keep them in the county. They're here.
A little bit on that, we, I had a conversation with Department of Labor yesterday. They are working with IFG, and there will be a job fair on the 14th of September. They posted that at the mill yesterday. There's a couple of dates, I don't know what those are, that the Department of Labor will be coming into the mill to kind of gauge the interest of the employees and what kind of training programs that they need to be putting together. I offered to go through the certifications and stuff that are available through MSU that are either no cost or low cost. And then the Department of Labor said that they had the opportunity to possibly, you know, help defray some of those costs with the programs that they have. So, you know, I know that from that end, they are all kind of working on it, and we've offered on behalf of the Mineral County Economic Development Corporation to support them in any way they needed, as well as Mission West, they were on the call as well yesterday. So, they'll be reaching out to us for whatever they need locally, you know, if, if it's office space for rent, or, you know, the community center or location for them to hold some of those classes, you know, that's something that we would help them coordinate. So, with that, definitely if you have any other training programs available through the state, if you want to kind of share those with me as well, I can pass those along to the Department of Labor and see if, if those are something that they can implement into those trainings as well.
And I do know there is, there's one that could be possible. I don't, I don't want to say too much now, just because I know there's a phone, phone conference being made right now. It started 11:30 to, to try and pull some other stuff. It's not just about here, but it's about some training programs, and so I'll get some information back later this afternoon after they've had their meeting to, to see a little bit of the scope of that.
Right, I would, I would just recommend to local employers, if you are looking for, you know, employees to reach out to IFG and try to get into that job fair, because we do have a lot to local, offer locally, and, you know, I, I did recommend to them to maybe reach out to some of those people, but, you know, I mean, as far as the contractors and stuff, they're not going to have all of the, all of that information. So, if, if the community could kind of reach out to them as well, if they're looking for employees that are interested in participating in that, that might be helpful as well.
You know, and with the apprentice programs that might be available, some of that, the employer would, could get some benefit out of that too. So I think those are the things that, like I say, we do have contractors, there are some small contractors that, if we can get them involved to.
And everybody needs to. Like Travis, and, you know, the, those groups, and then the travel center and.
Yep. Yeah, so some of my recommendations to IFG, you know, I, I just called to offer support and kind of see what they had planned. And so they gave me a list of about six companies, most of them were, well, all of them were out of the county. And so I said, you know, we have help wanted signs on every, every business here. So, you know, we need to at least include them and let the employees make that choice, you know. A job fair's a good opportunity to kind of not have to do an interview, but to get a feel for if that's something you'd be interested in. So, I think, yeah, I was going to give her a list of contractors and stuff that I know of that may be interested, but I mean, if, if they could do it from their end too, it would show that, you know, it would make her job a lot easier, because she's working with, trying to get these 99 employees placed as well. So she's making, they have extended the opportunity to work in other mills, other IFG mills, so she's setting up interviews for those employees that wish to do that as well. And I'm sure it's they, I'm sure it's not just a she, but who I'm working with, I know that that's kind of what she's been doing, is just coordinating that stuff. So, whether or not it's a team or just an individual, it might be the best option for some of those local contractors or anybody interested in participating in that, to reach out to them as well, so that they're not overlooked.
And that was on the 14th?
It's on the 14th. Right now, it's scheduled at the community center. I don't necessarily know if there's a bigger venue that would be needed, or, you know, I mean, maybe they'll run them outside if there's enough, good enough weather on that day, but.
Have you contacted Monty for a write-up in the paper, thinking about this?
I have not. I, I will follow up with IFG and C if they have. I'm sure that they, they probably publicize it, I would hope. I know that they posted it at the mill for the employees.
There's even, yeah, even in, in an article or something in the Missoulaian too, just to, because there, there might be some contractors, actually Sanders County, Two Plains. And, you know, some of their workers have come down here to work, and it could be that those from here could work out of Plains too, and they, some of those contractors are doing work in our county as well.
Right. Yeah, I can follow up with IFG, and if she hasn't thought about that part of it or didn't plan on doing it, then maybe we can write up something just in community comments or something that will get it out there a little bit more.
So is it from nine to three, or does, as they said, Tom just?
They haven't said a time that I know of.
For September 14th?
Yeah, there was a time.
Nine to four.
Nine to four, okay. I just know I have that community event in there the night before and asked if they needed me to move so that they could set up early, and she said they should be able to set up in the morning, so.
They need more room, I think the senior citizens might be able to, you know, threaten the store to be.
Okay.
Has ability.
Okay.
I was just going to say, I would hope that they don't string it so long for months and months, because there are other people, other organizations interested in that mill site, if it was to go up for sale, and I've contacted folks there, Corralane, you know, Andy, the chief, well, one of the chief financial guys know him, and it, I don't know, you know, it's such a last, or, you know, surprise, you know, what's, what's your plan now? But if they're letting all their employees go, it doesn't sound like they're probably really considering restarting it, but it's hard to know for sure.
And Tom said he, there was, the plan was not to restart. They'll leave some, a couple of maintenance and, and some security people, but he said he didn't see it.
Right, but when they revisit in 2022 or something, you know.
He said he didn't see it. He didn't want to get anybody's hopes up that it's.
Well, then why would they be also saying that it's not for sale, they're not going to auction off equipment?
Well, and you never know. Companies, maybe it's a way of eliminating competition too, you know, there's, you don't know what, all of that. And I, I think part of it too, they just don't want to get people's hopes up that it's going to turn right around and be right open again. I'm, I'm thinking, that's why I said they aren't planning on tearing it down, but they're not planning on opening it either. So it wasn't meant as a short-term shutdown.
I was kind of referencing his comment that maybe somebody's interested in the site.
Yes.
Maybe not for a sawmill, but if they could be a commercial enterprise. But if they're not wanting to sell it, then that kind of, if they're not interested in selling it, that kind of locks that idea out.
Yeah, right. Well, and that's maybe over time, you know, some, some support the commissioners can give us, like, don't leave us in, you know, kind of limbo, because if I understand it, when they shut it down, I don't know if we can still tax the equipment for a period of time. I don't, I'm not a tax expert, but, you know, we have a fairly big hole in our tax assessments because of the value of that property. But I know that there's another group that, it's not like anything's done, but there is some interest in that, because it's a very strategic piece of property, but, but it, it's really hard to get to the next level, you know, if they're just going to kind of sit on the fence and say, well, we don't know what we're doing, but.
And the access to power, the availability of water if it's needed, the railroad siding, I mean, all of that stuff is pretty valuable.
And that's what the, the people that have contacted me already about, you know, Al, so, but it's a type thing, we'll try to do our best to figure them out.
Well, they also have that property at Truck Rick, where the post and pole used to be.
Yeah, right.
I mean, they've got, I think there must be eight or 10 RV hookups they have out there. I mean.
Yeah, I forgot about the owners. I don't know how big it is.
It's pretty big, I mean, right now, I think there must be, great big huge tent things that they were putting the, they put it together and then took down there, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
Gosh.
I'd say 10 acres of the.
At least.
Yeah. So, I think I forwarded an email, but you guys get hundreds of emails, so I just was explaining my, dealing about southern transportation authority rail. And, and, I mean, we're going to talk about it at the resort board meeting on the 13th, I think, whatever that Monday is, and then probably talk about it again on the 14th at the training council meeting, but I'll just go through these real quick. As I'm reading, I'm not an expert, you guys are getting a lot more information from Monty and others, but the adoption of the resolution doesn't commit Mineral County to any expenditures, and I talked to Dwayne about it completely, and I totally understand, especially today, it's like, we just lost a big part of our tax base, if we can't commit to another endeavor, but as I understand, the resolution doesn't commit the county any expense. Number two is the service, if it's routed through Mineral County and, you know, we're always interested, St. Regis on the George Street, we could see that there would be an increase of visitors, and we all know that tourism is a big thing for St. Regis. It used to be kind of balanced, but now it's getting less balanced. But the tourism business, and I really like, I really appreciate Emily, you know, because there are people like the late Muffy and Gary that are desperate for employees, or Lisa, you know, and if some of those employees didn't want to sell their houses in Mineral County and worked there somehow, that, that's really good. But I, I could see the, if, if the, the goal of the authority, and if they were able to get the rail going. The other one is construction of the infrastructure, and my understanding, there's quite a lot of that, sightings and improvement in tracks and stations, would all create jobs in our county, you know, they, they would have to do the work, and then it would increase the tax base of Mineral County. And so, and number four, and the last one, was that I think opening up new transportation, not just for seniors, but everyone in Mineral County. I was a little kid, I think I was in grade school, and we lived down in Billings, then we moved around up in third grade, but there was a couple of times that our family took the train from Billings up to Bozeman to do things with family members, and I don't know how much, you know, that would be used, but I know, and I, I'll tell you, politically, you know, I'm a member of the Republican Central Committee. I don't like how they're funding things through the government, you know, but at the same token, if the transportation infrastructure bill that it's passed, or going to pass, I guess, provided some money to pay for Little Joe, I would say, well, at least we got, you know, I don't like how they're spending it, but at least we're getting something here that's going to benefit our county. So I understand the philosophy of not liking how they're printing money like it's going out of style, but it does sound like there's going to be a fairly large amount of money that might be available to this one in Montana, like, I'm hearing like $15 million out of a pot. And if it didn't cause, you know, I think personally, if it didn't cause the county to have to spend any money, just being at the table is worth it, but just my opinion. But just my opinion, I'm not trying to tell you what to do, just expressing my opinion.
And to be fair to you, George, I know I've expressed my opinion too before because it came through our transportation committee in the House. Two years, no, last session, or the session before this last one. And we took it up in the interim committee with, which is Senate and House members. And it was, it was put down, even the study on it, just because of the amount of money that it was gonna take in the state. One of the comments we did make, and that's partly what's happening, we said, well, you know, it's beneficial to all the communities and to the counties, if it's that beneficial, let them take it on. And the state didn't want a part of it.
Yeah.
And so, that is why I think it came back. And of course, Missoula commissioners have been pushing it real hard. And part of my idea on that, and I know back before there was, the railroad had done just a little preliminary and there was so much money to bring everything up to specs for passenger. And then the idea of the sightings they'd have to make and all the railroad. Every depot would have to be rebuilt, you know, or built. Some of them are even gone, and so it's the expense. And I know, you know, the free dollars, pennies from heaven. If it comes, if that comes down, it'll probably happen anyway, I mean, if it's that much. But I just hated to see, and I told them to not really buy in on it, partly because it's a dream that costs a lot of money. And so, just to be fair to you, I've made my comment to them on it too.
Yeah.
And I, I know, I rode the train when I was in college. I took it back to North Dakota a few times and train riding is fun. And there's that romantic part of it that appeals to people. And that's why it's caught momentum is because everybody, oh, I'd love to ride the train. The economics of it don't match that reality and that romantic side. I think you'd end up paying as much from Bozeman to Missoula on the train as you do the airplane, probably, you know. And still, you know, they're subsidizing the northern route even now.
Yeah, I mean, how many billions have they put into Amtrak?
Yeah, and what I, the other thing I said, if you want the alternative transportation so you have a quick, close connection would be to revive the bus system back the way it used to be, three buses a day. That slipped away too because the economics weren't quite there. So, like I say, I understand all the pluses to, you know, Mineral County could, if they had a depot and people got off and, you know, it'd be the stop to go up to the Iowa, then it'd be a big plus. But in the big picture of it, it's a lot of money to spend. We would come out, actually Mineral County probably would come out ahead because we wouldn't be spending so much. But, but it's, well, I guess it's sort of starting to catch a little more momentum.
Well, and that's the part, I think, because they know that there's a high probability the money's gonna come this time, you know, because the Dems are in control. And, you know, the president is proud of his riding Amtrak. But when you have Custer County, I grew up in Musfield County, and Yellowstone County's kind of still, you know, maybe middle of the road. But you start getting out to Weibo County and Fallon County and those, and when those guys sign on, they're probably, they're no, they're no different than us. And I think they're just saying, we're not taking a, we're not making a political statement about this, but if we're at the table, it's probably better than not being at the table. And that's kind of my point is, I'm not agreeing, like, if I thought what really made sense, because we actually had this come by, I think in 2000, and the university was asked to participate. And I was the guy that was leading it for the president. You know, and the High Line, you know, doesn't have anything, but they don't have any people, you know. So there's no one riding it between towns up there hardly because there's no people. It should have kept in the southern route, but then Swinon was governor at that time and somehow he kept it up there. I'm not saying we should pull it out of them, but the southern route is a lot more economical, you know, because there's people that live along the southern route. There's no one that lives on that, you know, Highway 2. But all I'm saying is, you know, when these other Republican counties all along the way are, you know, voting to be part of the authority, you know, with the caveat that they're not spending any money, I think we should consider it, but, and I'll be good with whatever you guys decide. You guys have a hard job, as I've said numerous times, and I'm glad, I'm not doing it.
And I do think with that kind of a caveat that's at work, you know, we don't see it as a bad idea, but.
No, we never have.
But we just are not gonna, we're not gonna buy in financially, you know. Then you aren't really committing. And it's sort of like the Little Joe Road. That's a good thing for the county if it gets paved, but the county can't afford to do the maintenance. So it's one of those things that, okay, let the road come, we just can't be part of it.
Yeah, and maybe what we're saying with that is, if it's pities from heavens, we'll take it. And we might actually get lucky in that they plus up that 1.5 trillion or whatever. And they're only spending, I think, what, 10% of it on actual infrastructure? At least, you know, the political rhetoric says that. And, but in that 10% of 1.5 trillion, we might get four or five million to pave the road and maintain it, so.
And that, it's the same type of deal in a way. I mean, you can see the plus side, it's just, we can't afford to pay that, that side is the whole thing. And there is, there's a consideration of the freight. You know, right now, if it happened, the passenger, the talk is the freight pays the way. So the freight will take, it could be the, it could be a milk drain, you know, as far as stopping every siding because the freight has to come through. But that might change too, we might not have coal cars coming through for in five years.
Yeah, I mean, there's so many things that are changing. Like, I really believe if I look out 10 years, that mill site that just closed down is gonna probably be similar to what you see, you know, in a lot smaller scale than the Sawmill District. Down there, we just bought an office down there, Regent, well, not Regent Realty, and I did. You know, and I would have, even though I was part of the planning of when that mill shut down and Dick King from Missoula Economic Development got this brownfield money, I was kind of going, yeah, that might, you know, I don't know, you know, seems like a far, you know, stretch. Go down there today and see not only what's being built, but they're gonna have, by the year 2023, that whole Sawmill District is gonna have 500 high-tech jobs. It's called Advanced Technology Group. And they're all paying over 100 grand a year. And that was a thing that, there was a big sawmill there that closed. And then over the last 21 years, the community of Missoula has been able to transition it. So if we look out in the future, I don't see a sawmill. If Idaho Forest Group can't make it on Sawmill property, it's probably not gonna be a sawmill, but there's probably gonna be something else there and.
Kind of like the St. Regis Park was a sawmill.
Yeah. Thank you guys for having me.
On this basis, if you guys, you know, change your mind on the resolution, I, as long as it states.
Right.
There's no money going, but I still, you know, be a little hesitant on.
Well, didn't you say at the interim committee, somebody, one of the legislators said it'd probably be just, just as economic to buy everybody their own individual helicopter?
Yeah, yeah. When it, you know, that's, that's part of that deal of the pennies from heaven.
Well, then I wonder, I mean, the northern tier being funded as Amtrak passenger currently.
Yes.
I remember last, sometime this spring or winter, they had to curtail from daily service to three days a week because they couldn't, and they laid people off.
The ridership.
Yeah, my nephew was laid off from October till May.
Like George said, the southern route, the romance would carry on a little bit better because there are stops along the way, but it's still one of those sort of romantic dreams that.
Well, people might want to ride it for fun, but when they really want to travel, time is money and they're gonna get on a plane.
You know, one of the things I had said was, they've got a track down the Bitterroot. And if they really want to try and do some efficiency on a train, you have all those commuters that come up.
Well, and that's why Danny and Phyllis, you know, railing has kept that.
Yeah.
It actually goes right by our whole, our new office. And, but he's maintaining that for light rail.
They do it for storage right now.
But if you look at the future of Mineral County and we're seeing it with Alberton, you know, it's gonna continue to grow as kind of a bedroom community. And if you really wanted to do, do the Bitterroot and then do out here to St. Regis and have a light rail, you know, stopping at the three towns, you'd be surprised at how many new developments we'd have out here. But, you know, like housing developments.
Yeah, and I think, you know, that's putting some real local benefit.
What was, Denny, what was the feeling that you got from Montana railing with the idea of light rail?
They don't really want to hear about it because, because they're looking at, well, like down the Bitterroot, they didn't really enter into that discussion. But as far as the southern route, the lobbyists just kind of shake their head when you talk about the passenger because of the expense they would have to put in. And they don't want to compromise their freight travel because that does pay the way. So they, I didn't hear anybody come right out. They've said, we'll look into it, you know, if they get requested to. But there's this sort of, in the background, sort of shaking their head like, we really don't want it. But they would, they would look into it.
Well, and then some of the counties that have signed on, like I thought, somebody had, was asked to help with advertising or hosting the public meeting in the paper. There is some money that people are having to chip in just to have the authority meet, right?
I think.
I think the city of Missoula gave $5,000 or something.
Some kind of dues or something, yeah.
I don't, I don't know.
I'm gonna run.
Okay, all right. Thanks for your interest and comment.
You, anytime.
Five, six, two.
But they did have some rough figures, you know, and it was, it, it, pretty big figures.
Yeah.
All right, but like I say, I understand, and we had people come testify, especially at the hearing when we had it in the House. It did, the resolute, or it passed to do a study in the House. It passed knowing it was going to the interim committee. And then the interim committee, in fact, it was one of the Missoula Democrats that made the vote, made the motion to kill the bill.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
A Missoula Democrat?
Diane Sands.
Because they thought the study would cost too much?
Well, just because the, even knowing what it would take to fix that, the rail would cost too much.
Let alone paying the employees and running the locomotives in the actual day-to-day.
Yeah.
And like you said, I didn't even think about the depots.
Yeah.
They have to build a depot in St. Regis, they have to build a depot. I guess I could use that old North Pacific depot in Missoula.
But in Paradise or Plains, Plains would probably want it instead of Paradise. So you'd have to probably build one in Plains or rebuild the one in Paradise or whatever, but. So, didn't know we talked about that today too, but that's. Anyway, I'll get, I'm finding some more, back to the mill stuff, I'm finding out some more information. Like I said, they were having a meeting today and basically.
Who's they, Denny?
Some legislator and some interested people, and it's part of the economics of ARPA funds. And some of the ARPA funds goes into natural resource jobs that might be lost because of natural resources not being utilized due, you know, everything sort of has to revert back to COVID, but somehow they're trying to pull some stuff together. And they had some training money that may have been classified to go to the university and they're gonna try and pull some of that to use it more for maybe construction and technical jobs. But even the university, some of that could, some of that would be like for an economic study in the county or something.
In the past, you know what the success rate has been for that? Like when Crown Pacific went down, those things always come up, oh, new job training and money for Votech and what happens to those folks really in the end? What do they do?
They move.
Yes, yes.
Right, and that's like, that's where I think.
Other sawmill to go to work at?
Yeah, and it depends on if these are all, they want to be the sawmill worker. And they have to, and I think that's what the job fair can kind of say, well, you know, here's your chance if you want to get, get the truck driving. You know, even in the sawmill, it wouldn't hurt to have a CDL.
No.
So add to your portfolio a little bit and take advantage of the training. And you, you still don't have to take that kind of a job if you want it, but it's a chance. And carpentry work, you look at the house building that's going on. And like I say, cement finisher, you can go anywhere, build on highways, go to any town you want to and move. So at least take advantage. But I, the person I was talking to this morning, I said, part of the idea is to try to figure out if we can get training, some of the ARPA funds for training for jobs that would keep the people in the county. The job, kind of jobs we need. And that, you know, look at even the little construction, you know, Donnie Warkin and Haskins and, you know, if they can get somebody with a CDL that helps them, if they can get somebody to run, learn how to run the equipment.
The road department's looking for some employee.
And highway department always is for winter help and that CDL. And I did talk to Bob Volson in Missoula about their help. They, they do allow people to do their CDL test in the state truck, and we've known that. So if people are interested in getting a little bit of training in that, they could, you know, those jobs, there are gonna be a few around here.
They're always looking for snowplow, I mean, even in timber.
Yeah, yeah, get the person through the winter or whatever until they find something else.
If you can get an exemption to wait until after hunting season.
That used to be my problem too, even, even working full-time to get off for the hunting season. But anyway, so I'm in the background getting a little bit of checking on that, so we'll see.
I remember when Crown went down, some of my friends went to work at Stone. And then Stone went down, some of my friends went to work at Tricon.
Well, and I think, you know, back then, they, they could switch a lot quicker because there were still quite a few mills around. Now it's, it's looking like that door is closing a little quicker. Technology has taken a few of the jobs away and, but people have to want them, go to train. You can't, even if it's available, if they don't sign up for it and don't want to do it, you can't force it, can't force them into it, so.
A lot of people too like, like a job where they can still kind of live where they work. You know, a lot of these jobs that, you know, highway jobs, well, you might be over in Glendale for four months of the year. Truck driver job, well, you don't have to know how often was he here to, you have me morning with a cup of coffee on a weekend.
Right, not.
Yeah, it seems like all of our, the guys that work at the mill like living here and then after work they can watch their kids' volleyball game and they can help their wife out.
Yes, Sagasor.
Yeah. Working the oil fields for three weeks on and one week off.
I don't know, it'd be interesting to know the story on the way.
That's for sure, that's for sure.
I don't know. Do you think more, Mr. Legislator?
No, I did get a call from Dane's office and they just wondered if there was anything they could do.
Yeah. We wonder too, what can we do, you know?
I said, I said, well, one thing you could do is you gave away a lot of money, unemployment funds to people that didn't even care to work.
Yeah.
I said, so you can set up some kind of a bill that gives an unemployment bonus to those people that have worked for the last year or more. Make it a special fund for those that you know are workers. He said, oh, I'll mention it. It was Jake that called. He said, I'll mention it to him. Well, of course, that may not happen, but that was, that was the first thing I had to offer to him. I didn't, you know. He said, well, if you need some, give a call. Well, we don't know what we need yet.
I don't know, I know that, you know, like you said, technology is replacing some jobs, like, you know, in the woods, it used to be five guys out there, now it might be a feller buncher and a sawyer. But there still is a need though for the product to build homes.
Absolutely.
And that requires a sawmill and, I don't know.
Yeah, and that's been part of the problem, keep saying, well, if you get more, more lot, timber sales, we don't have the infrastructure left to process.
Right.
And now, now there's one more piece going down. And I don't know whether Pyramid or Thompson River would consider coming in and even leasing the mill to, you know.
I don't think they'll let them.
Well, that's, that's it.
And I had, why would they?
Yeah, why would they? But I'm just saying that.
They eliminated one thorn in their side already.
Yeah.
I mean, that, maybe I sound bitter, but.
Well, no, it's, I mean, competition. They don't want a competition.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and I talked to Carol because the Cruzan sale sold last week and IFG was only bitter on the sale.
So then we're going to run into where people aren't even bidding.
Yeah.
Wow.
Travis.
Is that right?
Took that up in Canada.
That's a nice, dandy one.
Yeah. Do you know Tyson O'Connell from Missoula?
I don't think so.
He's a lawyer and they're, Travis and him are pretty good friends. He had a hunt up there.
Oh, Travis went on.
Yeah, they canceled it last year and he ended up with an extra spot.
Any more comment, Denny?
No.
Oh, I got, I got one question for Denny before I finish up. Are you running again?
Oh, yes. I filed, I, you know, and I, I guess I should have made some big formal.
You can file already?
Oh, yeah. You can put your intent in. I, I did that in June.
Oh, okay.
And, yeah, I guess I should formally, so I don't, they don't think I'm hasted. But I've done that before. I made this public comment or this press release and they've never printed it anywhere when I send it.
Maybe they don't like you.
Maybe they thought you were Rodney Dangerfield.
Yeah, I don't know. So I, I didn't bother, but I guess I should because, yeah. I'll have my little sign. We'll be in the parade tomorrow at Sanders County. You know, I'll have my shirt on, a little sign and then the auction sale. But I didn't, they have a booth up there and I'm not in it. And that might be to my advantage.
Okay, well, it's lunchtime, so I guess we'll be done.
All right.